Thanks for you to sign off on that.
They must know.
I would help out with the job.
I do think he says he's happy.
This is the live stream thing. I thought it was not much, but literally it's on right now. At the end of the meeting, I'll show you how to turn it on.
Yellow box.
Yellow box. Okay, so you'll be able to help me. Thank you, Alan. You might want to. That's. 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 That's.
Are we on livestream right now?
Yeah.
No, she pushed it.
She pushed it.
We are going to need to require everybody when you guys talk to go up to the front of the room.
Block the camera.
Quit the wide angle.
Not required to be seen.
We have an announcement to make. All speakers must come to the front of the room to speak. I'm going to call the meeting to order on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, for the town shooting. We need to play the lead.
The United States of America, and if there are wishes to have one nation, individual.
Thank you, Charlene. Okay, we need a bid approval on the CDBG demolition grant. And I'm going to have Kim Smith come up here and go over that.
Tell me when, Charlene.
Right by that sign is perfect. Just speak up so that it can be heard.
So paperwork for the demolition grant has all been approved by state and they've sent a release of funds notice. So the contractor can begin anytime. In his bid, he bid 26 days, starting on the March, May the 19th, which took us a little longer not to get paperwork done. So we counsel, request the council set a start date and completion time. And I'd recommend start date would be June 15th with a 60-day completion time. However, I'll do, or we can set in there, you will. You can decide whatever you want to set. The reason August 15th, that's a good time to start planting grass. And the contract says he can only slip seed or hydroseed. He can't do any straw. So request the council give instructions on when they wanted to start and how long they want it to take.
Okay, thank you. What do you guys want to do? I think we should take the recommendation of our project manager.
I just have a question. Did you not say in that documentation that the contractor proposed 25 days?
Contractor proposed 26 days to get the job done from May 19th, but it took us.
I gave you business days, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, either way.
So then that throws in another.
There were some liquidated damages on that.
On $100 a day, yes.
So it'd be his best interest to have a longer period, in my opinion.
Yes, and that's what I was recommending.
That's why I agree.
So a 60-day?
I'd make a motion for 60 days if that's what you need to do.
And start June 16th.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we need approval of the May 13, 2025 meeting minutes. Has everybody read? Do we need any corrections? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is that Tim?
Yes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Does this need to be signed?
Yeah, we can do that later.
Okay, thank you.
I emailed out claims on Sunday totaling $270,082.07. Did anybody have any questions on that?
Any questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the claims for $270,082.07. Okay, Steve. Need a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Charlene made 2025 financial approval.
I emailed those out on Sunday as well. Did anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
If not, I need a motion to approve the 2020, or May 2025 financials.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
You have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We need a volunteer for July. I will volunteer.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay, Ken, I'm going to be needing you to come to the stage.
Getting his steps.
First, let's.
Okay, first, we're going to go over the building demo, the CDGBG grant.
The grant has been released. The state has said that the town has completed all the required steps to get the money released. And the town has released, or they've released $150,000. The bids came in at $120,000. However, you can, if there's unknowns or other conditions, you have a 20% change order amount. So if there's anything that we find that needs additional funding, you could go an additional 20% per state law. I think when we did the school demolition, we had some money left over and we put some posts and some other things around. So that's ready to go. And once he signs contracts, he'll start on the June 16th and be on your supervising.
Okay, and then, you have an update on the salt barn?
Please. Salt barn is complete except for there's some trim around the manway door we would like him to put on. He didn't, he left a wood trim there. We would like him to put some trim around the manway door. And then he left two, or some wood blocks when he was forming concrete underneath the relings, the grates for the salt trap. So once he pulls those out, we'll run a truck over that and make sure it's going to work out okay. But he says it's rated for 80,000 pounds, so should be, should be fine. And other than that, they sold the outside of the wall. I believe Mr. Downey moved some salt in already, Tom? And they're already got 100 tons or something like that in there?
We got about 80 to 90 tons.
So if you want to see what 80 tons of salt looks like, go over there and look in the belly after the half the.
That was.
It, it, Mr. Downey designed most of that building. It's just a very, very nice, very well thought out building. So if you want to take a look at it after the meeting, I'm sure you wouldn't mind if they walked over to it. But other than that, it's done.
Okay, thank you. And then we need the CCMG update for the 2025 community council.
TDS and Frontier have some phone line to move on County Road 375 and 550. And we're waiting on them to move that. And they're supposed to get that done later this month. Once they get that phone line moved and they can go in and start work.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Okay, we approved Ken's contract for the CCMG 2025-2 last month. And he has the contract, so we need to sign that. Okay? Before we leave, you need to sign that.
I think you're.
Okay, oh, I didn't realize. Okay. Okay, road report, Tom, you need to come up here, please.
Well, we've been doing a lot of mowing because of rain and that. But we got, like Ken said, 80, 90, 100 of salt and root from Gold Anit over to the salt barn. And then we started cleaning up the kennel club there. And we had one load of signs, aluminum, all to Winsky's, two loads of scrap metal. And we got one more load to take down there. And we're just keeping busy so everybody, they can tear it down anytime they want. Then we got to move the stepped up left door for this building over there too, so. And we're trying to keep the park up and we're back to mowing again, so that'll help.
Okay, that all, Tom?
We got rid of the mulch up there too that, that was leftover. We put it back out on the playground and then stacked some up back where we did last year. So everything's looking pretty good.
Okay, thanks, Tom. David, do you have anything to add?
No.
Thank you.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Steve, were you going to talk about the yard sale?
I could. I mean, I appreciate Dave helping and Tom and a few others there that showed up. I think we made in the neighborhood of $500, corner Charlene. So at least we did our, I think, diligence in trying to get something back from the town on the accessory too.
I want to thank everyone for helping on that also because that was an endeavor and it went very well and we had a nice day. So thank you, everyone, for that.
I'd like to follow up on that, just to let the council understand. We did sell a few things and that was nice that we did get those sold, but there was a lot of treasures left. And most of them, especially things that came from the fire department, the old fire department, went in that trash dumpster out there. I don't know if it's been empty yet or not, but it was crammed full. And as Tom says, we took a lot of it to Winsky's. Just about every island cabinet and desk went to Winsky's. But we still have some things, such as a refrigerator over there and another hot machine, I think. And we also have some bottles, air bottles and fire extinguishers. Hopefully the fire department can help us get rid of those. And one other thing, there's a lot of wooden chairs over there. We'll be putting them out there also. And I believe there's still some wooden desks and things out there. You didn't get those put in the dumpster, did you? No. So that go in the dumpster too. I'm just putting that in there so that it gets in the moment so the kingdom work went and disposed of it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, next, park report, Dave.
I'm meeting on May 20. We talked about getting business for the pond and Josh, we got a design there, our master plan.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, Ken. We will be passing them out on maintenance. We have some curbs, it serves about too much mow throughout the trees. And the salt shelter needs fixed. We got the code on the garage doors to return the living setting. Dawn has two months to sign up for the shelter. We'll see about getting a better sign up. Talking about the ball field, Morse to reinforce the paddock, case it's up what's good, suggest the sideboard and walls and out the field. We would suggest that to extend it along the proposed sidewalk that you have here. And that's all I have as far as the meeting. I'm moving.
Do you have anything, Dan, Josh?
Ken put together this, this plan for us based on things we supplied and some other input. And he also, here's some different numbers that we really struggled on the dock. It's the big one, we struggled to get the boat to board. And then I think that Steve, I sent this to you, you know, too, but he was going to put out this thing, so you were putting out that extra. Is that where this one is from?
Well, we're based on the pre-bid that we pulled, like, from resupply.
But it does detail out this, all of the billions in the dock.
Could you pass out those cost estimates because I don't think we have.
Yeah, he didn't say, I'll reference that, he said it's very preliminary.
We know that.
Okay.
Uh, this design basically is put together that I feel should go to the parks committee. And they critique it and see what they want to do before we go forward with talking to any contractors. So kind of put your one, two, three, four priorities on there. Are you all right with that, Dave?
What is the dollar figure we have?
Don't you have somebody interested in donating as well? So it would be based on that, but your budget this year for land improvement, if I remember correctly, is between 70, 80,000.
Another thing I'd like to add is if you, I would think that maybe we should invite our donor to the next committee meeting so that he can go over this with everyone with the committee and see how he feels about it. Because we have no idea, do you have an idea what his contribution is going to be?
No, but he's seen this already and.
Even with this brand new one today?
Well, he saw it yesterday.
Okay.
But has it changed since yesterday, Ken?
Okay.
I'll invite, I'm happy to invite him. He's declined the limitation we've done before and talked, but we'll see if he wants to come or not.
But we would like to know what his, I would like to know what, and the board would too, I think, or the council, they want to speak for them. What his thoughts are on it and kind of what his contribution.
Yeah.
So we kind of know where we're going.
Yeah.
Because I think he ought to be the kingpin original, the original to figure out how to make more. And we know where to go from there financially. Are you guys on agreement with that?
Not far from me.
And it, this does look like if we do, if we do it all.
Yeah.
It's going to, it's going to need more than just quotes. It's, it's over the $150,000 threshold for public works bidding. So just, just as an F by F.
300,000. What's, what's the threshold for the 50?
Yes, 300.
And this is, this is 300, so.
Well, the 90, the first, item three is an overlap from one.
Oh, okay.
But it's still over 150.
Yeah.
Item three is.
My question, if, if it's not done all in the same year, then you can go with quotes.
Supposedly you're not supposed to break them up like that.
You're not.
You're supposedly not supposed to break them up to get underneath that threshold. But if you can't do it all one year, then I think it's, then I think it's legitimate. Okay.
There's no way you can get it done in one year.
There is a way that it can be done in one year. Financially speaking, there is a way that it can be done in one year.
I challenge.
Okay.
Let's see what the council, let's see what the park board comes back with. Let's see what our donor comes back with and get us a report back to the council. And then we'll talk about it later, if that's okay with everyone. Okay?
One more question?
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Mr. Morrison, what's the baseball people think about this?
I have not talked to them. I told them about the fence, that's really the only thing they need to be concerned about.
And so do you have comments from them, feedback from them yet?
No, nobody really commented. I mean, they're only talking about a few feet off of that right hill fence. It's not that big of a deal and it's not going to affect them at all.
I did talk to a person that's involved with the baseball, or softball, or whatever we have up there. And he did, I talked to him personally, and he did reply. He sent me a text.
Which, which one?
Steve.
Steve.
Steve was here.
Okay.
And he, I should have had Charlene print that out. But he's okay with it, but in the future, yeah. So I don't know if he was okay with it or he's not okay with it. You have to decipher what his text is. So we will have that next meeting.
Yeah, I sent them something early on and told them we were going to move that fence. I didn't hear anything back.
I said, well, he was up mowing his grass when I was, went back to the cornfield that day. So him and I, and I, I did a drawing and showed him.
It's all softball. It's all, and it's not going to affect them.
Okay.
At all. When you add eight feet to that fence, the total distance for home runs will be exactly the same.
Okay.
I mean, it's not, it's not that big of a deal.
I'm just saying we had some.
Okay.
What's preventing us from going outside the fence?
We're going to use the existing fence for the outside to keep people from walking out into the, into the road.
So you're just.
And put a new fence on the inside. So it'll be two fences going down through there instead of, like, this is the current fence on the outside. We're going to open that up and then just connect this to the end so the sidewalk can be on the outside.
It's also so slip and drainage on the outside.
It's just got a lot of grade for a ditch.
There's grade, yeah.
Yeah, you can't really get up if you hear.
There is an option that instead of going and putting the fence up, where there's an option that we put on the north side of the ball field. On one of those numbers. It is number.
It'd be item number one.
Yeah, item number one.
You mean instead of 11?
Instead of 11, yes.
We're going to do one regardless, though, anyway, right? There's going to be.
That isn't what the original one was.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Well, we're, we were always going to do one.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
In the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
The one in the front is, is for easier access if you might get much closer to your right of the parking lot. And it also gives you an easier, bigger loop around to go, but you're still able to get to on the backside. That's, I mean, that was always the long-term plan.
Okay, let's see what the committee comes up with and.
And there is some validity to not put a sidewalk out there by the road. I mean, there's, you know, it doesn't, would have to be done, but it does make a nice loop.
Okay, let's see what the committee says and, and our donor and bring us the feedback. Okay, thank you, Josh and Dave. Planning report, Tim?
We did not have a plan with me and Mr. Mike's mom. So nothing to report there, but we are getting a lot of requests for building permits. And we're getting a lot of, so I'm trying to request that they provide a site plan like Tepne County would typically require. And we're getting a lot of pushback. But I need some consistency because I don't believe that somebody taking a screenshot from Beacon with dimensions on it and placing a house on it is legitimate enough to. And I get it, if they've got 50 acres and they've got the house out in the middle of the 50 acres, I know it's probably okay. But I don't know if there's a gas line he's been going through there.
True.
And I, you know, I just, I mean, I, it's.
Or a tile line?
It's a requirement, you know, and it's unfortunate, but that's, if they were to do it anywhere else in Tepne County, they would be required to put a site plan together too.
So what do we need to put together to?
So Charlie and I are going to, I'm going to meet with the county building commissioner. Just see what he typically sees. We're in MS4 now. We've got to make sure there's a swift erosion control plan that's provided with all these house plans. It's just something we got to do.
Okay.
So.
So you're going to look into it.
Yeah, so I, I mean, it's, we're going to get a lot of people complaining about it, but, you know, they can't do it anywhere else this way. So, and I'm just trying to be consistent with it. You know, just like, it's easy for us to just say, here's the requirement, here's what you got to do. You know, and every, a lot of surveyors in town are busy. So I know it takes a little bit of time to get some of that, but that's, that's going to be coming up. I just want to get some consistency. I might get, you know, get some of the other members here for some feedback, but I think that's important.
I think that's a great idea.
What do the surrounding counties do that? Because you don't have to do that for any building permit anywhere except for Tepne County right here. I mean, you do want to get dandy, but all the more rural ones, you know, they're just letting it go.
I, I, yeah, again, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I, I know what we do in Tepne County.
Yeah, they're just letting it fly.
I'm just trying to be consistent, I guess.
Are those other counties, are they in EMS4?
No, no.
So that's, you know.
Probably not, yeah.
And we're in that now, that could be, yeah.
You know, we get a lot of requests for, you know, multiple buildings and, which I guess is not a big deal, you know, to have multiple buildings as long as, you know, storage buildings and things. When you start seeing, you know, restrooms and, and some of that other stuff that's going in, it's like, okay, well, what are we doing here that's a storage building that's got a restroom? What's, what's the purpose of that? You know, we're not supposed to have other residents on, on the properties. So, you know, you know, there's just some things that are a little bit of red flags here and there.
Well, we'll work through it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Anything else?
No.
Fire report, Alan?
All right, we met last Monday on the second. We participated in the Southwestern Safety Day. We had a crew out there with West Point to cut up a car for the students. We had another group attend the Hoosier Burn Camp at Camp Tecumseh's visitors' day. The 4H Fair is coming up. We'll be providing EMS coverage on July 23rd, that Wednesday, under membership. Dan Plank unfortunately submitted his retirement resignation a little bit earlier than planned. We were anticipating to him to retire in September. That circumstance has changed for him and he had to do it now. Because Dan was our lieutenant, we're now holding a special election to replace that officer. We opened up nominations last month, last week, and we will vote on the new lieutenant next month. And we had 10 EMS runs and three fired. And that's all I had.
Thank you. You have anything to add, Steve? Okay, citizens, we have any citizens' comments? If not, do I have any council comments?
I told Mike this, but I'm probably going to, I am going to, I'm going to resign from council. I'm just very busy and I'm not home enough anyways, and I've got three little kids, so I'm trying to make time for them. Is where it is. It's been a good eight and a half years here, but I am stepping down.
And you're going to.
I've got a letter, July 1st. But I put out a letter.
Well, thank you, Josh, for your service. We sure do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, do you have anything from the clerks' comments?
Crafting Day is next Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00. And I think that's it.
Any attorney comments?
I'll let Dave talk to the attorney comments because he's raising his hand.
And does anybody on the council know anything about Flax Drive, including the fire department? F L A X Drive.
Do you know where it was that I was talking about?
Me.
Okay, down 250, that last house on this side of the road, on the north side, there's that little drive that's called Flax Drive, I think.
It was never.
And it, and it's, and it's our lane and the farmers use it. You know where I'm talking about? The farmers.
You're talking about, there's no pavement.
You're talking about right down here.
You mean right down here in this field?
It's the last house.
There's two of them.
There's two of them.
Yes, the one, the last one.
No, there's two. There's one between Dan Dowell's house and the other.
We're talking about the last one.
So what's the other one named? Because the town has this one too.
I haven't.
Question, is the town supposed to maintain it with a gravel surface? Or do we leave it as it is? Guy is complaining about it being muddy.
Well, there's no mud on that. I can attest to that.
There's no mud?
No, there's 53 scum on that.
I guess my threshold question is, is that even a delineated town right of way or anything that we have responsibility for? That's my first question and I've never heard of this before.
It is town because when he put up his garage, that, that issue came up. Because he wanted to put it basically in our right, our, our road.
It's dedicated road. It's not.
He approached on the right of way with that.
But we approved. But we approved it.
Right.
We, we approved for him to put a drive to it, no?
No, 'cause that drive has been there for fifty years.
To the north, onto the drive? I mean, I mean the...
The north is between his house and the other one. Gordon helped put that in there. And I've used that drive since nineteen seventy-seven.
I mean, we're not gonna maintain Smith Drive.
Well, it's this drive we don't own, though.
Yeah, that road is unimproved, I mean, it's never been improved.
This guy good fifty-three stone on it.
But it's only for, it's only for...
Well, see, there originally there was a, a subdivision laid out in there, which you may be able to see that, and it was two entrances, that one and then the one down here by Dan Dowell.
The problem, because they dedicated, when they got that approved, they dedicated that to the town, so it's there, it's our road.
Yeah, it's our property. It's our property, but there's never been a road put in there, it's never been approved.
And there's a nail there.
Yes, I know, but there's...
There's a nail, I think it goes to the south.
Right, that, there's supposed to be a road, it goes to the south.
Yeah.
Now, the whole layout of that subdivision was, I think there's probably a sketch in the file somewhere that shows what they were planning on.
I had a sketch, Dad had it, but I don't have it.
So it's town property, but it's never been laid out as a road or...
That's correct.
Accepted as a road.
There's another one just south of...
Well, that's where...
Yep.
There's actually a name to it.
Well, that's where I think it's great, it's 'cause we did accept it as a road.
And there's an actual name to the road.
We approved the parcel, the way they tore up me, but we approved the parcelization, we approved the subdivision, and we accepted the dedicated road.
Years ago.
Way years ago.
Yeah.
But it is, it is, so I mean, there's some gray there.
That's okay. I'm not sure, somebody's improving the north one, he's improving the north one, Danny. So he's doing it on his own.
Yeah.
So, so the guy, so, again, it's, there's no road improvement there.
Yeah.
If the guy wants to fill it in with stone, with stone in there, I suppose he's welcome.
But he can't block it, so we might get in now.
It's still our property. Or his property, he's part of the town too, so it's public property.
That's correct.
Um, but it's unimproved, so I don't, I don't know what the actual, I mean, that's stupid.
Yeah, I'll have to, I can look into it, I mean, this is all kinda new to me, so I thought Flax was some kind of seed, so... They know it's a road.
Nowadays, you wouldn't dedicate it basically until...
Yeah, so they...
Until they're done, done all that.
Well, we might, and we might have to go back and look and see what our prior minutes, what exactly the council fifty years ago did.
Well, do we know when it was done, recorded? Or dedicated?
Precorporation.
Was, it was pre?
Only now.
So it's Tiffany County.
Yes.
We weren't seen, right?
'Cause we had another issue with the person that lived in the house, we gave them a easement onto our, they, the, uh, adjustment where they could build on, they wanted to buy all that from us one time, do you remember that, Tim?
Yeah.
They only held it, held it back.
Okay, we'll look into that.
So I don't do anything until...
Nope, not till our attorney and we, our attorney and, and Tim, we kinda figure it out.
You want, but, just so I understand, what this guy's asking is that we do something with it?
We put gravel on. Improve it from, from a loophole.
He's good, I mean, we could vacate it.
And give it back to the landowners.
Well, we could either vacate it and put it on the market for Joyner to buy it.
But then, that's the easement in now that...
I, it's still an in, in-game secret. So there's, there's different options, but...
Okay, I'll, I'll check into it.
And just go back to that farm.
See what I can find out about it.
I got one more.
Yep.
I met with some people from Chris Berkin Associates who do our stormwater. They came and did an assessment, I spent close to two hours in the rain with them. They took that information and they submitted some forms to IDEM for approval. We should hear something back on our stormwater prevention plan for this facility by the end of the month. Just adopted. Yeah, this one. That's all.
Okay.
For, sorry, what? For this facility?
For what?
For this facility.
For the whole five, well, whatever is here.
There was a stormwater plan approved for this project.
I understand, but it was submitted by IDEM, Ken.
Well, I just, I just wanted to know if they, they can use that as a reference.
For the overall plan for the entire city, including the park.
I was just trying to say, they may say some more about it, but... It's not me helping, sorry.
You can do an NLT for this, I know.
I think they're gonna do it on back.
I know they do after so many, after time frame, I know, but sometimes you do an NLT.
I can't remember all of it enough.
Okay, attorney, Tom?
I have that one, uh, thing, uh, we were talking, I think last meeting, there was a discussion about wheel tax and, community crossing grants and all that kinda good stuff. I think the consensus has come down after all the people got, you know, underwear, underwear and a bunch, uh, that we can adopt, you have, you have to have a five thousand population to adopt the wheel tax. We couldn't do one if we wanted to, so I, we don't have to adopt one to qualify for the grant. That seems to be the consensus. That's all I got.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move for adjournment.
Second. Any discussion, all fair or say no?
All right.
Does anybody wanna come look at the button?
Charlene, I, I suggest we keep these out for like the next six months.
Yeah.
You got anyone? Cause I didn't like that.
That's all right.
We always say that about that.
And you're saying if I blew it, it would go like this.
Oh, sorry, cause fifteen seconds before it, it's like...
You got a lag? So I can, I can...